Good evening and welcome. My name is Kate Jones, President of the League of Women Voters of Frederick County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan group. We encourage informed and active participation at all levels of government. We strive to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and we influence public policy through education and advocacy. At tonight's forum, we have two candidates for the Frederick City Council District Five seat, Sarah Hempel-Irani and Ryan Trout. Our moderator tonight is Betty Mayfield. Kate, you're muted. Sometimes it's just too complicated. Sorry about that. Our moderator tonight is Dr. Betty Mayfield. She is past co-president of the League of Women Voters of Frederick County and Professor Emeritus of Mathematics at Hood College. Our timekeeper tonight is Sue Kunkel, our treasurer. Thank you, Betty and Sue, for being here. And now Betty will review the rules for tonight's forum.
Thank you, Kate, and welcome to our two candidates. The candidates have agreed to the following rules and guidelines for tonight's forum. We'll start with each candidate giving an opening statement. They'll each have two minutes in which to do so. Afterward, I will begin asking questions. Generally, the candidates will have up to one minute to answer. There'll be a few exceptions when we will allow up to two minutes. If the answer time has been extended, I will say so at the end of the question. Otherwise, assume the answer time is one minute. Make sure that you have our timer on your screen. She'll hold up a card when you have 15 seconds left, and another when you have five seconds left, and finally, a big zero when you've run out of time. We ask you both to be respectful and wrap up with only a word or two at that point. We point out that tonight's event is not a debate, it's a forum. You'll not be given an opportunity to challenge or comment on your opponent's answer to a question. If you feel you must respond, you may take some of the time allotted for your next question after you've answered that question, or during the two minutes you have allotted at the end of the evening for your closing remarks. Of course, we ask that you show respect for the other candidate and for the timer. At the end of the forum, each of you will have two minutes to give a closing statement. If everyone is on board, we'll get started with the candidates' opening statements. We'll go in alphabetical order. So Ms. Hempel-Irani, you are first.
Thank you so much. As you said, my name is Sarah Hempel-Irani. I am a small business owner in Frederick. I have had a sculpture studio here for the past 25 years, with the exception of a few years when I had to move away due to employment. In that time, I started an arts nonprofit. And so I would like to bring to city council my skills in collaboration and creativity and bringing communities together. And you may know my sculpture Claire McArdle on the Creek. That sculpture is part of the reason that I'm running because I saw so much power in what this women's group could do when we brought all of these different groups and community partners together with the city, what we could do. And it was a gift for the whole city, which is what I'd like to do here with city council, is work together with people to serve the city. My daughter goes to Frederick County Public Schools, and obviously, we live here in the 5th district. And I thank you so much for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Trout.
Hi, good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and to Sarah for being here this evening. My name is Ryan Trout. I'm running for city council in District Five because I believe Frederick should be a city that is affordable, connected, and rooted in community. I've spent more than 15 years working in housing and community development. And today, I serve as Director of Housing and Community Development in a nearby city. I've managed programs that support affordable housing, youth mentorship, and emergency assistance. In fact, during the pandemic, I led Frederick County's Emergency Rental Assistance Program, delivering close to $10 million in support to area tenants. I taught local government and housing policy at Mount St. Mary's University as an adjunct professor. And through these experiences, I've seen how smart compassionate leadership can lead to real differences for families in our community. As a council member, my priorities are clear: expanding affordable housing so working families can live in the communities that they serve; building a connected city where residents can safely walk, bike, ride public transit, and where our roads and infrastructure keep up with growth; investing in safe vibrant neighborhoods with strong public spaces, arts, and parks that bring people together and strengthen our sense of community; and making sure that government is accountable and transparent so residents know where their tax dollars are being used effectively to deliver results. Frederick is a city with tremendous potential. With thoughtful leadership, we can make sure that growth benefits everyone and that no one is left behind. I look forward to earning your trust and your vote. Thank you.
Thanks to both of you. And now we'll start our first round of questions. Mr. Trout, this first question is for you. You have deep roots in Frederick County. What has made you stay here, in particular, in Frederick City? What can we do to encourage more local young people to make their homes here?
You're right. My family roots go very deep in Frederick County. I believe that I am a seventh-generation Frederick County resident. My children are eighth-generation. And I think it's that sense of being tied to the community that draws me here, right? I mean, my work history has allowed me to work in places like Baltimore and Washington DC, but I've always called Frederick home and Frederick County home. It's our... Part of it is proximity, right? The idea that you can be in the mountains in a 10-minute drive to the beach in three hours to Washington DC or Baltimore City within just, you know, an hour to an hour and a half, depending on traffic. But here in the city, what really keeps me in Frederick is our sense of community and our diversity. We have a really wonderful ability to highlight members of our community and bring them together. And I think that's why I call Frederick home. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hempel-Irani, you are not originally from here. Why did you choose Frederick? And what has been your experience living here?
Thank you for this question. So I wanted to be a sculptor. And how does one learn how to do that? I managed to meet one of the artists and residents from the National Cathedral, and he invited me to work as his assistant. I lived in Gaithersburg for one year, and one of the other assistants said, "You've got to get out of here. We've got to go to Frederick." And so we went up to Frederick, and I rented a studio there for $60 a month. And so it was affordable, it was quirky, it was beautiful. And I instantly had this amazing arts community here. And basically, I made my dreams come true here. I worked on bigger and bigger projects. I did some marble sculptures for a church in Potomac. And then I met my husband, and I found a great church community, and we started our family. And like I said, we had to move away for a short period of time, and we could not wait to come back. And when we came back, it was, this was the first time I'd ever felt I was coming home. You know, I grew up in a military family, and I have never really had a true sense of home. And so Frederick has absolutely become home. And I just, I love this amazing community. Thanks.
Mr. Trout, affordable housing is one of the top issues in the city and the county. It's a complex problem. As a city council member, where would you start? You have two minutes for this question.
Correct. All right. Solving affordable housing in two minutes. Here we go. So I think fortunately, I'm so excited that every member of our council in this campaign is talking about affordable housing. I joined the Frederick County Affordable Housing Council in 2011 because I noticed my friends had followed all the rules, right? They went to college, they got the four-year degree, and then they couldn't afford an apartment in Frederick. They couldn't afford to stay, as you mentioned in that, my previous question. They couldn't afford to stay in the area where they grew up. And so I got involved. And I think what we need to do, it really comes down to three key areas. In my day job, we're focused on supply of housing, stability for deeply affordable housing, I'm sorry, subsidy for deeply affordable housing, and stability of existing affordable housing. There is no panacea. There's no one policy that is going to fix the affordable housing crisis that we find ourselves in, the state of Maryland and the United States find themselves in. It's going to take kind of an all-of-the-above approach. And so what we're doing is, we presented 40 different ideas to the mayor and council across those three legs of the stool in order to tackle the affordable housing problem in my day job. And that's the type of approach I would bring to the city council, that we're going to need to develop a plan and a strategy. We're going to have to hold staff accountable for making progress on that plan. We're going to have to look at our zoning. We're going to have to look at how we're using pill money to subsidize affordable housing. We're going to have to make sure that we have pattern books for accessory dwelling units to make it easier for families to build accessory dwelling units in our community. It's one thing to make it legal, but if they're not happening, how do we make it easier for families? So there's a plethora of policies that we're going to have to work on as a group. Luckily, it sounds like we have the political interest from the candidates in doing just that. And I'm happy to lead that effort. Thank you.
Ms. Hempel-Irani, same question. Where would you start when it comes to affordable housing? You have two minutes.
Well, I like to think that artists are creative problem solvers. And so I would like to have a multitude of kind of small solutions as we're working for those big long-term solutions. So things like what Ryan mentioned with accessory dwelling units. Not just, they're already legal, but break down the barriers so that people can actually do them and that the city, I think, could create workshops to make that happen. Incremental development in making, again, making the permitting process a little bit easier and more straightforward for local people to build on their own property. I think that rent stabilization could be a tool, especially in the interim, to keep people in their houses and keep them from homelessness. And then writ large, you know, bringing together people to kind of restructure our land management code and reimagine how we're going to build into the future. Our land management code, you know, is preventing duplexes from popping up in certain neighborhoods, is preventing some mixed use and things like that. So basically, bringing down the barriers that are standing between people wanting to build homes and what's actually being happening. I think that Airbnbs are a small part of the economy, but I know that I lived in an accessory dwelling unit that was probably now an Airbnb. And they're currently not really regulated at all. And keeping some of those smaller units available for the housing market. I... I'm looking for the time.
You must be okay.
Okay. It's the timer thing really throws me off.
There we go.
There you go. So again, creative problem solving. There's a lot of people working on this, and I do not pretend to know everything, but let's put them in the room together and break down some barriers. And let's get this happening with some real action. Thanks.
Thank you. And we have another question for you. We can't talk about more housing without talking about infrastructure. Traffic is a longstanding Frederick issue, seemingly without abatement. Where would you begin looking for answers as a council member?
Well, traffic is something I'm really passionate about. And part of it is, I think that we need to imagine life beyond car-centric infrastructure. Most of us drive because it is the only option that we have. And I feel fortunate that I live within walking and biking and bus distance from where I work. But I often don't choose that. And it's because it's, you know, the buses may not run as often as I like, or, you know, the biking isn't particularly safe. And of course, walking takes a little bit longer. But I think there's a lot we can do to build into the infrastructure and the culture of getting out of our cars for everyday errands. And that kind of goes back to the land management code for some mixed-use development. We live across the street from a grocery store, and the infrastructure doesn't lend to walking. So I would work really hard to make pedestrian crosswalks safer and more accessible.
Mr. Trout, obviously, the daily late afternoon traffic jam that Frederick becomes isn't just a city issue. As a council member, how would you get the county and state resources and cooperation needed to make improvements?
Thank you for that question. I think it's bringing people to the table is the first piece, right? Making sure that the delegation, when they go down to Annapolis, are fighting on behalf of the city to bring resources back in the state budget. The same, it can be said, for working with the county. I think also pointing the county to its own comprehensive plan document, Livable Frederick, identifies Frederick City as a primary growth jurisdiction within the county. I think we need to make sure we're having conversations with them that the resources then also flow to the jurisdictions where they want to see growth happening. So whether that's in infrastructure, whether that's parks, or whether that's schools, right? These are all things that we should be considering as infrastructure. We need to work closely with our county partners and our state partners to make sure that they're putting priority funding in the areas where they want to see the growth happening over time anyway, right? So this is an opportunity, trust, for us to work collaboratively with them.
Ms. Hempel-Irani, do you think city government is as transparent and accessible as it needs to be? Would you make any changes?
You know, when I've been talking to residents, I've heard from a lot of people that they don't feel that the people in the city are listening to them. And I think that we need to do better to create listening sessions. And, you know, we have the NACs, and they've sort of, I don't want to say fallen into disrepair, but they're not very well-attended. And I think especially with the districts, we can get to know our voters or the people in our districts a lot better because there's fewer of them. And I think that direct interface with the council member is really, really important. And whether that takes place in local parks or with, you know, in partnership with the NACs, I think we should strengthen the NACs so that that communication doesn't just go one way. People don't just want to download information. They want to be in conversation with their council people and have them really listen and hear them and reflect back what they're asking. And so I think we can do that face-to-face. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Trout, if elected, how will you keep your district informed of what's happening and how you are representing them?
Thank you for that question. District representation is vital. And I think that the shift to districts is really key to making sure that we are representing the neighborhoods within our district and making sure that they have not only a voice on the council, but then that city information is being brought to them in their communities. One of the things I would like to do is have, at minimum, quarterly meetings within each neighborhood, right? And so those would end up being multiple meetings happening either each week or in a weekly basis, but rotating through the district. And then that way, you can meet in neighborhoods, at community parks, meeting with the NACs and trying to encourage the NACs to be, to grow and have resources from the city. We need to update the city website. It needs to be easier to navigate and be more clear. There need to be more language options on the city website and in the way that we conduct our meetings. But when we ask the public for input, we need to give them time and resources to do so. The recent county and city climate and energy plan was published. It's over 100 pages, and they were given 11 days to respond. And you have to find it on the website, right? And so like, that's not appropriate. And so we need to make sure that we're giving people time.
Thank you. And Mr. Trout, again, in this primary election, you're going to be on a ballot that only has Democrats on it in an election where only Democrats can vote. Republicans and independents won't get a chance to vote until the general election in November. How do you feel about that? Do you think it's fair?
The two-party system's a complicated system. As a, as an adjunct professor of state and local government, I talk frequently with my students about the forms of government and the way that voting occurs. I think in the current system, allowing a party to pick their representatives who can represent their values and their issues in order to then have a general election against the other party's representative makes sense. Do I think that there are alternatives or potentially other ways of encouraging folks to get engaged and participate in the process? Absolutely. I think it can be troubling that we see continued, or continue to see growing numbers of independents who I think feel disengaged from the two primary parties. And then that is incumbent on the parties to try to reach out and encourage those folks to represent their values and also to make sure that they're producing outcomes that those folks want to see from their governments. Thank you.
Ms. Hempel-Irani, how do you feel about non-citizens voting in this election?
I've said multiple times that I think this was a compassionate move on the city. You know, we have a very broken immigration system in the country. And we have people who have been residents of Frederick longer than I have. And, you know, their children are born here, and their children go to school. And so I think if the local issues are about the residents who live here and who work here and whose kids go to school here, and I think that we should include them in local elections.
Thank you. And Ms. Hempel-Irani, again, what impact will the new district representation have on the city and its residents? And do you think the process of redistricting was fair and transparent?
Well, I think that this is a great step into the future. Frederick is growing. And I think what happened, has happened historically, is a lot of the focus from city council has been on Market Street. And I think this enables neighborhoods all throughout the city to have a stronger voice in what's happening representationally. The committee that rewrote the charter, you know, I think was comprised of some really smart and engaged people. And I think they, you know, did a good job. And then the organization that drew the district lines, you know, had an impartiality insofar as they're from, you know, looking outside to within. However, we have only one minority-majority district, and I think that it would behoove us to think about those district lines so that we can get better representation from neighborhoods that may have historically been disenfranchised.
Mr. Trout, many of the incumbent council candidates have said, if elected, they look forward to working with new council members. If elected, what will you bring to the collaborative process?
I think, for me, I believe it's years of experience engaging with both the city and the county. I helped a sitting council member who's running at large write the rental licensing and inspection program ordinance. I helped another, I led an initiative at the county to rewrite the moderately priced dwelling unit ordinance. And the county, the city was involved in that process. I made sure to be inclusive. And they then were able to copy that ordinance a year or so later. And so I think what I have is a combination of new energy, new ideas, but also relationships with existing council members, with the county, with the city, in order to be able to move things forward. I also think my experience working in a government that used outcome budgeting, where we can actually measure the progress and performance of the initiatives that we're putting forward on an annual basis through the budget process, would be something I would bring to the council. Thank you.
Mr. Trout, immigrant residents exist in every district of Frederick City. How will you engage with and seek input from people of different cultures in your district?
Thank you for that question. So I like, I think it's imperative for us to recognize the contributions of our immigrant friends and neighbors, right? And so just like anybody in my district, we need to be going to where our community exists, right? We need to meet them in their neighborhoods, meet them at their places of worship, meet them at their employment sites, to be able to talk to them and understand their issues, their children's issues, their neighborhood issues, in order to be able to be responsive to them. But that also means making sure that the information that we're providing is in languages that they understand, that they have time to digest that information and respond to that information, right? So it's a comprehensive approach of going out and being in the community, being accessible and responsive to concerns in the community, but then also making sure the city itself is accessible to all members of our community.
Ms. Hempel-Irani, how will you engage with and seek input from immigrant and/or undocumented residents?
Well, first of all, I mean, I have an immigrant family. My husband is a first-gen American, and my daughter was born in India. And so we've had a curiosity about our own kind of extended communities. I think that one of my strengths is leading with curiosity. And so I love to meet people and meet them where they're at. I recently visited the Islamic Society to talk to people there. I'd never been to a mosque before, and it was amazing to get to know people. And they were so welcoming. Our church hosts a Hispanic church. And so I've gotten to know some of the leaders in that church. And so I think especially places of worship, these are safe places, that it's, it's really important to make sure that people know that the people who represent them care about them and know them and are curious about their lives and their real lived experiences. And so I would bring a lot of curiosity.
Mr. Trout, Frederick City residents are also, of course, residents of Frederick County. What new initiatives would you like to see the two governments work on together to improve life in your district?
So I think first is identifying school sites in particularly the new developments on the western part of the city. As I knock doors, overcrowded schools is the number-one issue that I hear about in those neighborhoods. And so the city has a responsibility to be an active participant in conversations with the county and with the state when it comes to school resources and holding developers accountable to making sure that we have school sites available to help take the load off of the pressure of our school system. I think another area that I would look to work on is in the affordable housing space. The county has recently elevated their housing department to a housing division. And we are, the city and county collectively, based on a recommendation from when I served on the county executive's Housing Quality of Life Transition Committee, they're doing a housing needs assessment. So we need to work in tandem with the county to then implement the findings from the housing needs assessment. Thank you.
Ms. Hempel-Irani, do you think young voters in your district are engaged in the city's issues and policies? If not, how would you encourage more engagement as a council member?
Well, I have several very young people on my team, and they seem very engaged, which has been such a tremendous boon. I teach adjunct at FCC, and I know that a lot of the students there are feeling despondent. They're not very hopeful about their future, whether they could, you know, get a good job and afford homes. And so just being in conversation and relationship with young people, I think gives them a sense that their voice matters. I definitely think this has been a challenge historically, that a lot of people don't notice the importance of local elections. So I think it's really important to go where they are. And where they are are, you know, schools, the community college, you know, Hood College, Mount St. Mary's. We have a lot of wonderful resources in our community where we can engage with a lot of young people.
And another question for you. What are your top legislative priorities for the city? And how do you plan to achieve them? You have two minutes to answer this question.
The first one will be to update the land management code. And this is a Herculean task. So, you know, this is more of a long-term vision, just like they did with the city charter when they rewrote that, bringing together kind of the best minds to work, to go through it and to see what is working for us and what isn't working for us. And how can we update this to include our values of incremental growth and affordable units and accessory dwelling units, so on and so forth? Second thing, and this may sound like a small thing, but I would really like to change the name of Tonny Avenue. I think it's unconscionable that we have this street that goes right through my neighborhood and, you know, up through college estates named after a truly horrible person in our history. And I think that it would show respect to the people who live there. The third thing is, we have a mixed-use plan, a mixed-use path. The third thing is we have a mixed use plan, a mixed use path plan. And I would like to make sure that there's some action behind that. I know that Seventh Street is supposed to get a bike lane and all of our bike lanes are supposed to be connected. And it feels like molasses trying to get this done. And people are really saying, you know, oh, there's a bike lane. It's not connected. And I would like to show action on it, but not just action, but communicate with the people in the neighborhoods, like what's happening and why is this important to their neighborhoods? You know, some some people who don't bike don't see the value in that. And so some of that is getting the road construction done, but also communicating the importance of getting some cars off the road, which is relieving traffic. And that is one of the things that I'm hearing at the door a lot is traffic problems. So so the land management code, changing the name of Tawney Avenue and seeing some action on the bike lane infrastructure.
Thank you. Mr. Trout, same question. What are your top legislative priorities? And you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. My first is a comprehensive. I'm viewing it as a like an omnibus housing bill. So I'm very excited that after a few years of talking about this, that the federal government has decided to do an omnibus bill where they threw in a whole bunch of great ideas into one big bill and unanimously passed the Senate Banking Committee a few weeks ago. And I'd like to take that approach locally, right? So it includes the land management code, but it includes conversations around rent stabilization. It includes conversations around the MPDU. Because we have to look at this as a system. We have to look at it holistically. Particularly have to bring all of these actors to the table because there are times when a particular policy that's being pushed is going to have advocates for and then folks against that policy. But by doing an omnibus approach and looking at trade offs between different policy options, we can really develop a comprehensive approach to housing affordability for the city and then give the staff a roadmap that they are able to follow. And then that leads to my second policy priority, which I mentioned earlier, which is shifting our budget process to an outcome focused budget process. This would require each agency to present their budget as a, almost as like a grant application. We need X amount of dollars and we are going to produce these outcomes for the city. That also then allows us as legislators to hold them accountable come next budget season. We want to know, did you achieve the outcomes that you set out for your department? If you didn't, why not? Was there some unforeseeable issue? Were there staff shortages that made it difficult for you to do that? Or is it a management issue, which then allows the executive branch to hold staff accountable in a different way? Right? And so it allows us to be transparent with our voters and allows us to really move the needle on the things that matter most, which is producing outcomes for our residents.
Thank you both. Mr. Trout, both the state and federal governments are cutting budgets that support our city projects and nonprofits. Further, the president's tariffs may be just beginning to affect our economy. As a council member, how will you approach what could be difficult economic times ahead?
I think that the one, I think, approach, you need to bring people together, right? You need to understand what are the pinch points and challenges that they're going to be facing or that they're seeing in potentially their their pipeline or attracting talent to jobs. What are the different risk areas that the city might face? Is it a cut in federal workforce? Okay, so what happens with those folks if they're displaced from a job? And how can the city step forward and leverage the resources that we have? Then we also need to really focus on diversifying our local economy. We can't put all of our eggs in a federal government basket and hope that that's going to kind of buoy us through tough times, particularly if it's the federal government that is causing the choppy waters, right? And so what we need to do is we need to invest in local small businesses. We need to make sure that we're helping them get through the permit process, that departments are speaking to one another in order to overcome obstacles and help stabilize our and diversify our local economy. Thank you.
Ms. Hempel-Lerani, what impact will the tightening of state and federal budgets have on Frederick's arts community?
Well, Maryland is the third, is the state that is the third best spending and investing in the arts. And I think what people don't understand about the investment in the arts is that the arts is a huge sector. In the state, it's larger than transportation. And the arts generate a tremendous amount of economic activity and tax dollars. And so the the tightening of the budget, you know, people often will cut spending in the arts during difficult times. And yet, at the same time, will look towards the arts to sort of get them through these hard times, just like we saw with COVID. You know, a lot of people turn to creative expression on Zoom and, you know, started baking and gardening and this sort of thing. And so the the challenge really is how do we make sure that we keep artists afloat? And I think part of it is, you know, the city can step in with properties and offer studio space and performance space. Thanks.
Mr. Trout, does it appear to you that climate change is a priority in the city of Frederick? What policies would you propose?
That is a good question. Do I see it? The city is certainly is working closely with the county to develop plans. And my understanding from those plans is that without, right, where's an expectation to cut greenhouse gases by 50% by by 2030, right? And by 100% by 2050. But our current growth, transportation and the potential impact of data centers could actually create an increase in emissions by 38% by 2050. And so I think the the real answer at this point is no, we're not taking it seriously. We're kind of hoping maybe federal policy or or international policy will help save the day. But as a local community, I think we then need to take this plan and we need to operationalize it. Again, we need to then ask the staff to produce outcomes that they're going to do year in and year out. And we need to hold them accountable. And I think that's our role as legislators is an accountability measure for the executive branch.
Ms. Hempel-Lerani, what does the city need to do right now that could help with the effects of climate change on our community?
Right now, I think that we need to bolster our transportation system. You know, automobiles are one of the biggest contributors to greenhouse gas and traffic, which is the thing that I keep hearing that that people are the most frustrated with. And, you know, we have to work with the county and even, you know, work within our own community to and make places that people can walk to, that people can bike to. There's a wonderful tree canopy program that I've participated in. And I think that we need to address some stormwater runoff. I know that in my neighborhood, I have a neighbor who is consistently being flooded because, you know, growth and impervious surfaces are creating kind of essentially rivers down our streets that are causing, and that's because we're building more and we're building more. So with our new land management code, I think that we need to be very serious about how far away things are located and where is the water going to go as it runs off as we're seeing larger and more unpredictable storms.
Ms. Hempel-Lerani, new policies and actions by the current administration of Washington have some Frederick residents feeling unsafe, especially our immigrant and LGBTQ plus communities. As a city leader, how will you address those fears?
Well, one of the things, you know, we've been talking about getting into the communities and into our districts is actually get to know people and listen to their anxieties and their fears. And they're very, very real. And I like to think that Frederick is is this, you know, nice little safe place. And I think we've done a very good job being inclusive. However, we've not arrived and we still exist in this, you know, fuller country. You know, making sure that we are connecting with community groups that serve communities, immigrant communities and the LGBTQ communities and making sure that they're resourced and that it's a two way conversation, that we're not just implementing things onto them or we're just reading their newsletter, that we need to to listen to the communities and ask them what they need, rather than sort of supposing that we know what they need. So it all starts in in relationship and listening to those communities.
Mr. Trout, Frederick City Police have a policy of not inquiring about immigration status during their engagement with residents, even during arrests. The county sheriff's department, however, runs the jail and it has a different policy. What more, if anything, can city leaders do to gain trust from its immigrant and non documented residents?
Well, I think building trust goes far beyond our policing strategies alone, right? So a lot of that is showing up in neighborhoods, even in times when there isn't an emergency, hosting national night out events in more than just three city parks, but getting out into all of our communities, making sure that you know resident leaders in those communities, presenting at all of the NAC events and all the NAC meetings. The police used to do that. They used to give updates. They used to talk to the NAC leadership. And so making sure that there's a two way dialogue there. The city can also explore potentially other contracts with other facilities instead of the county jail. Do we, if we decide that we don't want to participate in a system that we feel goes against our values, then we need to explore other options. And as a council member, I'd be very open to that. But policing and building community trust, like it starts way well beyond the direct interaction between a police officer and and somebody who may have committed a crime. Thank you.
Mr. Trout, the fifth district is very strangely constructed. First of all, there's a big hole in the middle of it made by Clover Hill. Then there are older neighborhoods like Amber Meadows and the Tawney Avenue area. Up north, you have newer neighborhoods like Kellerton. What are the common concerns of the people you've talked to?
The concerns I'm hearing are maybe kind of fourfold. I'm going to go with with four across the district. Overcrowded schools is a concern, particularly in a number of the northern and western neighborhoods and communities. Walkability and safety, particularly pedestrian and bike safety in a number of both the new and older neighborhoods, there's concern about that. My wife and I were walking to a community event at our neighborhood park and we had a truck pass another car on a residential street where the speed limit is 25 and they were clearly going 45 or 50 miles an hour in a residential street. Where also the house where a few years ago, the Safe Streets gang put out flyers and there was a flipped over car in the middle of our street because the car was going so fast and that's in our neighborhood. Affordability is a huge issue in our community, affordable housing. And then communication with the city, making sure that folks feel connected to their local government. And I think that there's a perceived disconnect.
Ms. Hempel-Lerani, as you have campaigned for this seat, what did you learn about the people who live in the fifth district?
My most favorite thing that I've learned is that everyone that I've encountered says that they live in the best neighborhood. And whenever I let them know that, you know, well, yes, I've heard that, but the folks in Whittier say they live in the best neighborhood. You know, and the folks in Villa Estates are like, no, 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 obviously we live in the best neighborhood. And and in Amber Meadows, I met, you know, person after person who's like, I love this place. I've lived here for 40 years, for 30 years. And I just, I love that sense of community spirit that people really love it here. People really love living here. And I will contend that that, you know, Villa Estates is in fact the best neighborhood, which is where I live. But people love it and, you know, people have different challenges based on their neighborhoods, where they live and they wish that things were different. But I don't know that any of them are itching to get out of here. You know, it's a really dynamic place to live. So I've enjoyed getting to know people in different neighborhoods that I wouldn't necessarily have opportunity to go there if I wasn't knocking on doors.
Mr. Trout, what is your view on the city's basic services like street repair and trash pickup, for instance? What, if anything, needs to change?
I think it's adequate, right? I'm excited to see the city has now expanded the pilot of the composting. But I think engaging our community is a way that we can make sure that that things are taken care of. I have been in local, participating in local government and in our community for long enough that I have many of our elected officials' cell phone numbers. And so when I see a stop sign that's broken and hanging upside down, I text a council member or I text the mayor and I ask them to fix it. Having resident input and pipelines to to make sure that we have a lot of eyes in the community looking out for opportunities to create enhancements. But I will say, when it comes to like walkability and pedestrian safety, it's drastically lacking. I mentioned that car that flipped over. It took a year and a half for us to get white lines painted down the edge of our street. And that is not acceptable. And we need to make sure that we're listening to residents and listening to their needs and that we're meeting them where they are.
Ms. Hempel-Lerani, is the city offering enough to keep our very young people, like teens and tweens, engaged in our communities in positive ways?
I think there are a lot of wonderful volunteer options here. For example, my daughter has a meeting with the Asian American Center to for some volunteer opportunities. However, I think that there are a lot of young people, you know, nearby my neighborhood who don't have a lot to do during the summer. And some of it is transportation. You know, where where can they go? How can they get there? There's not necessarily a community center, you know, right here on Seventh Street or up up in College Estates, for example. And so I think because of the walkability issues, a lot of young people are sort of at the mercy of whoever can drive them. And so when we create opportunities that that especially teenagers, they have access to, that gives them a sense of independence. There are a lot of amazing nonprofits in Frederick that that engage young people and the, you know, the Boys and Girls Club and the Youth Center expansion that's that's being planned on Jefferson. I'm really excited about, but I'd love to see something like that here.
Ms. Hempel-Lerani, we've talked about the lack of affordable housing. Along with that need, some neighborhoods are experiencing gentrification. New houses dwarf 60 year old ranchers and newly renovated apartments have rents that are out of reach for people who live nearby. Do you think the city should invest in preserving the character of some of our neighborhoods and if so, how?
Oh, that's a challenging question. I do think that one of the things that Frederick does well is especially downtown is preserving these beautiful old neighborhoods. I think it's, you know, change is is part of the world and things are always changing. However, it's it's, I think it's a poverty when we see somebody who's invested their entire lives in a community being being pushed out. And that's a place where I think that rent rent stabilization and tax relief can come. I know that there are, I've met a lot of retired people who are worried about staying in their homes. However, I don't know how much we should restrict some change, you know, if if a single family law wants to become a duplex, we're introducing new housing to the stock, which is really, really important. I think I think this is a very dynamic and neighborhood specific issue that should be, you know, brought the the neighbors together to, you know, to listen to them.
Thank you. Mr. Trout, downtown continues to be a successful tourist attraction. In your view, what improvements or changes need to be made to grow this part of the city's economy?
Just to clarify, your question is what do we need to do to encourage and improve more tourism in the city? That part of the economy?
I think you could interpret it that way, yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I was clear. So I think not just having the the East Frederick Rising Small Area Plan, but adopting that and putting it into into effect. There have been discussions about an arts corridor along Carroll Street from Carroll Creek and going south. I think investing in in that effort as well, bringing folks out to the Golden Mile and making sure that we have tourism opportunities and investment on the Golden Mile. But I don't want all of our tourism to focus on like downtown. Now, we need to make Now, we need to make sure that we're bringing a lot of the opportunities for our own residents to engage in arts and entertainment out into our neighborhoods. And I think that's where the city can really leverage its parks and its community park system to have performance art and visual art happening in our neighborhoods. So folks can walk with their kids to their local park. They can carefully cross the street when there's a speeding car, hopefully on a newly paved or a newly marked walkway. But then they can get to the park, enjoy an evening with their neighbors, and watch performance art in their community instead of always having to go downtown.
Ms. Hempel-Lerani, the city council must approve all land use proposals through the process of zoning and planning. One example is the proposed cricket stadium near Monocacy Boulevard and Interstate 70, which seems to have surprised many residents. The proposed stadium could hold as many as 25,000 fans. We know now that the new council will get to vote on this plan. Will you support the stadium?
I think that the idea of bringing a new sport to Frederick is really exciting. I don't know that this particular spot is the right place to do it, and certainly not with 25,000 fans. I think that that number keeps floating around, and I, there's a lot of misinformation about what is being planned. And because it hasn't passed through zoning yet, there's not a solid plan. I think that if they can reduce the size and make sure that the environmental issues are taken care of, that the traffic and parking are addressed, that the lights are addressed, and that the, you know, there's a lot of barriers that they have. So I don't know that this is the right site for them. But I, you know, I think the idea is interesting. And I want to say that I worry about people's response to something new that's coming to Frederick, and that we should make sure that we're listening to the people who are excited about it, and also that the people who have concerns.
Mr. Trout, same question. How do you feel about the cricket stadium proposal?
I think similarly, excited by the idea of something new coming to our community. However, economic development through stadium development is not a good economic development, particularly if it's not integrated wisely into a plan. Actually, one recent one that's kind of kicking the trend of bad economic development is the redevelopment of the Hagerstown Sun site. They did that downtown, and it's spurring local business. And so we really need to think more creatively. I think as the plan is currently being floated out there as it currently appears, I would not support the plan, but I would look at creative solutions to potentially connect it to redevelopment and enhancements at the Fair Ground site, or in conjunction with the work happening at the Key Stadium, or potentially a site that has more accessibility somewhere else in the city that won't produce the same type of traffic concerns, noise, light, and environmental concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Trout, is there any one issue or place in the 5th District that you feel is in need of an immediate solution or needs immediate attention?
A place in the 5th District that needs immediate attention? So there have been rumors of a potential annexation that is, I guess, potentially near or in the 5th District, depending on how the line goes around that farm. I think that that is a piece that will need to be addressed fairly soon and comprehensively, particularly thinking about the school crowding issue in that part of the city. But another concern I have is really not a specific area, but a specific area of concern that I think represents the whole district, is feeling disconnected in some way from their local government. I've had more than one resident at the door tell me that they don't know what's going on, that they're not providing information about things happening in their neighborhood or nearby. And one, in fact, told me that a police officer had told her, an off-duty police officer had said, oh, we don't come to your community. We don't come to your neighborhood anymore because we've essentially written it off. And those things are unacceptable. And so making sure that staff understands their role in serving our community, but that the community knows we're here for them. We serve them, both the elected officials and the staff.
Ms. Hempel-Lerani, if you could write and enact a new law right now, or change or eliminate an existing law, what would it be?
That's a challenging one. The first thing that comes to mind would probably be a right turn on red. And many drivers might bristle at that thought. But when I look at safe crossing areas, a huge majority of the unsafe part of it are people turning right on red, is because they're looking at oncoming traffic, and the pedestrian gets the go light. And so the pedestrian's crossing the traffic that's going this way, and then the people turning right on red are turning into the pedestrians. And this is particular at Fairview and 7th Street, which is kind of the crosswalk that prevents our kids from walking to North Frederick. So the kids in our neighborhood and in College Estates, it's a really dangerous crosswalk. But I see that around the district is people are turning right on red. And, you know, unless it's a very rural place with not a lot of traffic and pedestrians, I just don't think it's appropriate in the city.
Thank you. We've now reached the last round of questioning. I do want to alert you all that my computer is telling me that my internet connection is sketchy. So if I'm abducted, Nanette, you can take a, this is our last question. You'll both get the same question, and you'll each have two minutes to answer it. And it is, what do you think Frederick will be like at the end of your four-year term? And what will you do to affect that? Oh, I should probably tell you who I'm talking to. Ms. Hempel-Lerani, you're first.
Great. This is wonderful. This is a wonderful use of imagination. I am hoping that in four years, now, I understand that the pace of government is slow at times. So, but I'm hoping that in four years, that we have our comprehensive bicycle path finished, or at least close to being finished, and that we have young people able to access after-school activities on their bicycles, and that I could bike to work safely, and that we move some cars off the road. I'm imagining there's a very new, exciting arts project happening called Artspiration that is not necessarily connected to the government, but I imagine there might be some overlap and support where they're offering studio space and rehearsal space. And I would love to see our arts community thriving. A lot of people are moving away because of affordability, not just of homes, but because of studio space. And who knows, maybe we can ride our bikes to the art studio. I'm imagining us with a new land management code, and that doesn't sound very exciting, but when we're looking to the next phase of development, because Frederick is not going to stop growing in four years, that we're building smarter, more connected neighborhoods, and that the neighborhoods that we do have are more connected to one another, and that the district representation, that people in District 5 feel like their council member is listening and is communicating well, and that the city, the people in the city feel connected to the local government. And, you know, our voter percentage, people who come up to vote in local elections, is pretty low. And I'm hoping that with this new charter, that the citizens here feel engaged, and that in four years, we're going to, we're going to double that, and we're going to have more people come out to vote because they feel like their government is responsive and that genuinely cares about, about their needs. So.
Mr. Trout, same question.
Thank you for this question. I agree. It's a great way to really think about the type of Frederick we want to see, right? And so for me, a lot of it comes down to a transparent, open government that is producing the outcomes that Sarah mentioned, that other candidates have mentioned, and that I've talked about tonight, right? And so making sure that our, that the plans that the city have are operationalized in the budget on an annual basis, and that we're holding ourselves and the staff accountable for making progress on the things we say are priorities. Having a plan and letting it sit on the shelf and collect dust year after year is no longer acceptable, that we need to be producing results for our community. I think a part of those outcomes that I'd like to see, similarly, revamp of our land management code, but also making sure that we are training small-scale incremental development folks in our communities, so that your neighbor might be the person who builds your accessory dwelling unit. And when we talked earlier about economic development, that's a way to diversify our economic development and create community wealth. It also has a money multiplier effect in our neighborhoods and in our community. I'd like to see our communities feel more connected, not only to their government, but to one another, right? Having seas of parking lots and an inability to meet and greet with your neighbors, and that's where these art events, community events, police events happening in city parks, leveraging that asset to make sure that people know their neighbors, they feel more connected, they feel more trust in their neighborhood, and that when they need to borrow a cup of sugar, they can go right down, they can walk down two doors and knock on a door, instead of feeling like they have to get in their car, drive to the grocery store, to go and buy an entire bag. And then I would hope that in four years, we've identified some new school sites with our county partners, and that those are in the county CIP, so that those are being funded long-term, so we can deal with our overcrowded schools. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
And now it's time for our closing statement. So this time, we'll go in reverse alphabetical order. So, Mr. Trout, you'll go first, and you have two minutes.
Once again, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters, and to those watching on YouTube, either live stream or, you know, tomorrow during work. Thank you so much for engaging in the local government process. My name is Ryan Trout. I'm running for city council in District 5, because fundamentally, I believe Frederick should be a city that is affordable, connected, and rooted in community. I've spent more than 15 years working in housing and community development. And today, I serve as a Director of Housing and Community Development in a local, in a nearby jurisdiction. I've worked as in the local housing authority and with the county government, managing programs like first-time homeownership, rehab programs, funding of affordable housing projects through the MPDU Pill Program, youth mentorship, and emergency assistance. I've done this long enough that I've now taught both state and local government classes and housing and homelessness policy classes as an adjunct professor. And through these experiences, I know that smart, compassionate leadership can make real differences for our community and for working families. Again, as a council member, my priorities are to expand affordable housing, so working families can live in our community, and that their budgets can go a little bit further each month, that we should be building a connected city where residents can safely walk, bike, and ride public transit, and where our roads and infrastructure keep up with growth, that we're investing in safe, vibrant neighborhoods with strong public spaces for arts and parks that bring people together and strengthen our sense of community, that we're making sure that our government is accountable and transparent, so residents know that their tax dollars are being used effectively to deliver results. Frederick is a city with tremendous potential. And with thoughtful leadership, we can make sure that growth benefits everyone, and that no one is left behind. My name is Ryan Trout. Please vote early or on September 9th in the primary, and I hope I've earned your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Hempel-Lerani?
Thank you so much for this evening, and to all of you watching. You know, I believe that my work in public art has prepared me for public service. You know, for the past 25 years, I've owned and operated my own business here in Frederick. And so I know what it is to be a business owner here. I've built my life here. I've raised my family here, and I'm a neighbor. And I believe that representational government really, you know, needs to be one of us. A lot of people say that they want some, some new voices in government. And, you know, I'm, I'm not new to Frederick, but I'm new to the city government. I know all the people on the council and many of the staff members, and I have good relationships with people. And I want to build relationships, not just with the staff, but with the people who live in District 5. And I will say, this is my first campaign, and I have learned so much. And the thing that I've loved the most, surprised me, is canvassing. As I've gone out into the neighborhoods and I've knocked on doors, of course, I've gotten the, you know, dogs and the person who slams the door. But what's more, I've gotten to know the people who live here, and I've had the most engaging conversations. I have heard what people are saying, and a lot of it is the same thing I'm saying, and the same things that I feel. People love this community. People think that we've allowed growth to outpace infrastructure. People think that the traffic is untenable. They're worried about, you know, the stormwater drains. But ultimately, people want Frederick to be its best. And I'm always impressed with the nonprofits in the city and the way that the government collaborates with the nonprofits to look out for, for our fellow citizens and, and working in this community. And so I would love the opportunity to, to serve all of the people that I've met and the people I've not yet met as a collaborator and relationship builder and coalition builder. So, thank you so much. I'm Sarah Hempel-Lerani.
Thanks to both of our candidates for participating in tonight's forum, and thank you for running for public office. We wish you both well.
Thank you so much.
All the league members who have worked to bring this forum to you, to Kate Jones, our president and tech person, to Nanette Hobson, our vice president and head of voter services, and to Sue Kunkel, our timer tonight. And at this point, I will turn you back over to Kate Jones.
So, thank you, everybody, for the, I don't know why, I don't know why I'm not showing. Thank you, everybody, for the wonderful forum we've had tonight. Additional election and candidate information is available in the Voters Guides created jointly by the Frederick News Post and the League of Women Voters of Frederick County. The Guides include information about where, when, and how to vote, as well as candidate answers to policy questions. The Frederick News Post will distribute the English-language guide to its hard copy and digital subscribers in the August 16 through 17 edition, which you've probably already received. The League will make hard copies of the English and Spanish guides available at Seber Arts Library, Centro Hispano of Frederick, the Asian American Center of Frederick, and senior living centers throughout the city, including the Tawny Village Apartments, the Frederick Senior Center on Tawny Avenue, and Homewood. Thank you for being here, and for those online, thank you for watching. A video recording of this event will be available on the same YouTube page we streamed live to today. You can find the link on our website at llv.org and on our Facebook page. Please remember to vote in the primary. Early voting takes place August 22nd and 23rd, and Primary Election Day is September 9th. We will be having additional forums and another Voters Guide for the general election on November 4th, 2025, when everyone will be voting, Republicans and Democrats and everybody else. If your address is current on your state voter registration, you do not need to register. But if you've moved recently or are a non-citizen resident, the deadline to register or change your address for the city general election is September 30th. It's already too late to, to make the changes for the primaries that are coming up, but I wanted to make sure you, you checked and knew that you still had a chance for the general election. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Betty. Thank you, Sue Kunkel, for being a good timekeeper. And thank you to our candidates for making sure government works. Thank you.